We good to go?
Still have three minutes till 5:30.
We can start without them. Can't start before the designated time.
Mine says 5:27. What is...
10 minutes fast?
Hmm?
Monitor's are 10 minutes fast. If they can be at the county town hall tomorrow?
They're 10 minutes fast? I don't have a watch. Is that the correct time? No, no, no.
You're excused.
It's with these little mics, they sound awfully loud. Yeah, somebody's turned them off. Darn it. All four on. Same person.
To say, you know, 2005 when we had the original PAD.
Access for the monitor. Access for the monitor.
Two years now.
To the TV? So switching.
Call to order, town Prescott Valley work study meeting, September 5th, 2019. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palguda?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Glad to be here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thanks ma'am. Tonight's an important night. NFL football starts right now. So, that's exciting. But with that being said, let's just move on to item 3. Ms. Van Herren, come on up.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, I thank you for allowing me to present the final results of our community assessment project. I'm going to pass out some things to you. Alright, what you have in your hands, the little booklet is designed by a great graphic designer, who helped us create a roadmap for staff so we could introduce our three key priorities in six areas of focus. The rack card is what we will be introducing those, yep, right there, to our community. And we will, I've already sent out some PSAs on Facebook and other areas, so I will explain what those are about. So, about a year ago, we started this process of a community needs assessment. It was probably one of the hardest projects I have ever worked on in my whole library career. During this process, I think the most important challenge that we discovered about our library is ensuring that we are open and welcoming to everybody. The world has changed greatly in the last couple of years, and we needed to make sure that we are removing barriers to access of information and services to help people get on their feet. The underserved and invisible should feel welcome and encouraged in our space, both physically, virtually, and out into the community itself. And we want to make sure every voice is heard and every story told. So with that, we decided we need to do a community assessment. That was one of my first priorities as a new director, is to go out into the community and garner input for library services. So often, libraries get stuck on what they believe our community needs, and that's old-school thinking, and we needed to do something different. So, we wrote an LSTA Grant, Library Services and Technology Act grant to receive a help from a consultant to start out this process, which again, was really, really intensive. We hired a consultant who helped give us a roadmap to where we needed to go in order to get the best input. And we also trained staff to be able to facilitate conversations. And of course, this allowed us to build capacity and leadership in our organization. So, the best way to reach the community is get out into the community, AKA what we call in library land outreach. Again, that's just something that our community really, really appreciated, is that we were coming to them. They appreciated that we were asking their input for services. They were, I don't know how many times I heard that from a lot of the groups that we went to. Wow, this is great, thank you for asking for our input, we really, really appreciate that. So, in these conversations, we went to schools, parent-teacher organizations, moms groups, the police department, faith-based organizations, social services, and my favorite, the teens. We really got some honest feedback from our teens, which helped guide us into one of our areas of focus. So again, we spoke to over 14 groups and over 335 community members in this past year. So depending on the organization, we spent about 15 to 20 minutes asking to be put into their agendas and asked questions like, "Why do you have a library card? Why not? What would you like to see from the library?" And the two important questions that really garnered the data and the input that helped drive all of our initiatives, or the patterns and needs and trends that you see in the community, and what do you see families struggle with. We received some great feedback, and we saw that it was pretty much straight across the board. Of course, drug addiction, we really can't do anything about that, but we can help with education and information. Education, literacy, communication, parenting skills. There were a lot of great information that really helped drive our trends and services. So, again, trends started to emerge in our data, and we immediately found out that we needed to redirect our services to these three key priorities. Building bright futures, community and civic engagement, and build our team. We also spent a lot of our time with our staff, because they're very, very important to these services. A, they have to buy into them, and they have to move forward and embrace these changes and these initiatives. And of course, we worked with our staff to develop professional development needs and certain skill sets. So, how are we going to do this? How are we going to move forward? So out of those three key priorities became six areas of focus that we, as a library, are going to focus on in the next three to five years. Early literacy, internships for young adults, which we have at the library here, our very first paid young intern. His name is Josh Sisson, he's over at A A E C, and he's working, he's getting paid to work here at the library between five to 10 hours a week. We're going to be focusing on LGBTQ youth, making a space that is welcoming for them. Community and civic engagement, of course, small business tech, and staff development and training. So along with our key priorities, we ask our community for input on our mission. We also ask staff, and we put staff first, as you see in this mission. Compassionate and knowledgeable library staff, welcome. We want to put our staff first, because if we don't, they're not going to be there to support the community, they're not going to buy in, they're not going to understand what we're trying to do here. Along to support our mission is our vision, building bright futures. And that's going to be an early literacy and a literacy program partnership that we have with the Humboldt Unified School District, where we give every first grader a library card. So, yes, we're building bright futures for our youth, we're investing in youth, but we're also investing in the community. So who's going to do this? Those people right there, our staff. We have amazing staff who have been great in support of this last year. And we all believe with our staff that libraries can push back against fear with the power of information and provide a space that says, no matter who you are, you are welcome. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Go ahead.
The logo, BPL, is that fairly new?
That is new. That was developed by our graphic design artist, Bree Hinkle, who we love. She's so creative.
Good job on that, I really like it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Casey, I mean, I can't say it enough, you're just killing it.
Thank you.
You're doing an amazing job over at the library. The Vice Mayor talks about points of pride here in Prescott Valley, and without a doubt, our library is on that list.
Thank you.
Are these available now for the public?
Yes, we're going to be putting out the cards tomorrow. I wanted to present them tonight before I sent them out for the public, so you guys have a first look at it, so. Alright.
It's exciting, it's exciting.
Moving on, item 4, discussion facilities use policy concerning the use of the police conference room and Santa Fe Station Park pickleball courts. Mr. Woody.
Another winner.
Alright, so we have a couple of different presentations this evening. Each of them is going to focus on pickleball and a conference room over at the police department. Some might view this as a matter of housekeeping, but a few, or the latter element in here really is from an operational standpoint, which will be based upon ordinance. So for discussion, we're going to start with our usage policy and procedure. I have a visual aid tonight, really it's just the condensed version of the 30-page document that you have, which is our policy and procedure manual here, focusing on these two key elements. So if that's available up on your screen, it'd be found, we'll be starting on pages 16 and 19. And they're really focusing on, in this particular area, the incorporation of pickleball. So we're introducing the term of courts. There will be four courts available at Santa Fe Station Park. So this is identifying the use of those courts in those various locations. They'd be focusing on ongoing facility allocation, so if we have intergovernmental partners that want to use those, that is the intent behind this, of making sure that that's included, as well as then also with the lights, that will also wrap up into our ordinance in regards to rules and regs for their use. Later on down into the document, on pages 20 and 21, we're focusing on the non-programmed, or non-commercial occupancy areas. Those are on pages 21 and 20, or 20 and 21 in our document. Again, focusing and highlighting on the incorporation of courts, as being available for that use or reservations of those types of things. Also with any lights, which those courts will be predominantly lit on an ongoing basis. And then latter, on page 28, in regards to forums, then we transfer our focus and attention on to the police department's conference room and their facility expansion there. That is made available to the public, and basically the outreach for reservations of those facilities would be through the Parks and Recreation Department, that contact information. The reason being for that is this is a facility secured outside of direct interactions with the police department, and the Parks and Recreation Department hosts the scheduling operations for the entirety of public facilities for the town. So whether that's the civic center, the library, the police department, or the parks in general, that's the process of contact. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have related to the policy and procedure updates that are being recommended.
I have a couple, the pickleball courts, they're going to be on, they'll have a gate to them, correct? Much like a tennis court?
Yes, sir.
But the gate won't be locked?
It will not, with the only exception, and we'll delve into that in regards to operations, would be the impacts coming from Mother Nature. Much like we do at the skate park, if there's ice, or snow, or other impacts of that nature, then they would be locked down, and let us have that opportunity to clear it out, or take the time to let Mother Nature walk away, or come back in another way that alleviates us.
Sure, but for the most part, the other 350 days of the year, we don't have snow.
And utilizing it, pretty much just like athletic fields.
Great. And then for the police department, the conference room, the fee schedule for that will still be, nonprofits will be?
And we'll delve into that in our next section? Yes, sir. Where, all of these different things are segmented for different processes.
Perfect. Anything else?
I actually have a comment, Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
I have many pickleball friends, and they've been bugging me for five years, and now they're leaving me alone, thank you.
Well, you're welcome.
They're very excited, by the way, and very appreciative, it's important, you know that.
Well, we're going to keep them on the hook of bugging you for the month of September, then on October, we'll let you. Have some fun.
Great, if there's nothing else, Mr. Woody, I guess you're staying up there for item 5, discussion facility use fee schedule pertaining to the police conference room and Santa Fe Station Park pickleball courts.
You are correct. So again, another summary document, we're focusing on these two areas being presented. This revolves around the rates of usage. So this will, again, we're opening the doors for inclusion of court rental rates, maintaining the exact same categories in regards to who our different users are, whether they be sponsored, or IGA partners, resident, non-resident, and commercial. And then the corresponding schedule based upon those two particular areas. The pickleball courts are listed here as a per-court-per-hour rate use, with the rental a two-hour minimum. This again reflects directly in correspondence to how we look at our athletic fields made available. And then, under IGAs, we have that type of agreement and process, resident, non-resident rates within, for the other two categories. And then our pickleball courts related to then, on tournaments, we are not recommending, commission and staff are not recommending the use of the pickleball courts for tournament purposes, i.e. there are only four courts, so it's a very minimal situation. The other aspect is, is there's a maximum of 32, or 34 parking spaces at this site. This site's going to be a very active site, it's going to have an athletic field there, it's going to have a playground there, along with a Ramada supporting and a restroom there. So that would be the general thoughts there, with the understanding that we're also working with our pickleball community in the development of six additional courts over in Antelope Park when that day comes. So, those are our thoughts as it relates to pickleball courts and the fee schedule revolving around those. Again, regional research kept us right in line in regards to the recommended rates that you have before you. And then, the final item is listed for the police department. The functionality of that conference room is comparable to the Crystal Room here at the library, and so we have followed suit again, keeping those two facilities within the same context, and the rental rates on those are directly in relationship to the other. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions concerning the fee schedule.
You've answered my question, sir. Counsel, are we good? Moving on, item 6, town ordinance recommendation pertaining to the Santa Fe Pickleball, excuse me, Santa Fe Park Pickleball Courts.
Yes, sir. These would be considered those rules and regulations for use and operation of the tennis court by those folks that want to pickleball. And so these have gone through a review. Again, we looked throughout the state, seeing what common operation or law is within the pickleball world. We also reviewed it with our specialty group that was out there. We had resounding thumbs up. This was also presented to our Parks and Recreation Commission for their thoughts and reflection, and so presented are the pickleball rules and regulations. And then, that would be on page 2, and then on page 3, delves into a little bit more of those general operations. We're reflecting on general park hours, as already established by ordinance. The rules or definitions of occupancy and play. Pretty much, everybody get along, have a good time, enjoy yourselves, and rotate effectively, so that everyone can do that. Also reflecting upon the simple fact that the department will be looking at lessons and clinics, and there will be public rental opportunities. And then jumping in regards to weather, as we discussed a little bit earlier, for court closures. And if anyone would like to rent, or if someone would like to become an instructor with the town, giving a little bit of that information. And then, on a case-by-case basis, as needed, on a weekly rotation, we would be out there performing whatever necessary maintenance might be required. So we'd have a scheduled date and time for us to be able to conduct that. So with that being said, if there's some specific questions concerning those rules, I'm happy to answer those.
Doesn't look like it, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, I might just mention that Carol Cornell out in Rhode Island is preparing the actual documents, including the amendment to the code that would adopt these rules and regulations. And one of the things we've noted is that, over time, we have three different provisions. One dealing with a dog park, one dealing with a skate park, and one dealing with the, oh, the artificial field. So anyway, one of the things Carol said to me was, you know Ivan, why don't we combine these and not have one separate, because a lot of similarities are there, and where we need to have differences, we can set that out. And so she's, just so you know, it won't look exactly like this when it comes in front of you, but it should be the same substance.
Great, thank you, sir.
And that's why Carol still works for us. She's our brain away from home.
Absolutely, yeah.
No offense, Ivan. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Alright, moving on. Item 7, council interviews. Council interviews the three candidate finalists for the existing vacant council member term expiring in December of 2020, then considers nominating one of them to be vacant, to the vacant position by straw ballot to be ratified at the September 12th, 2019 regular council meeting. The finalists are Brenda Dickinson, Lori Hunt, and Mary Williams. Okay, so how it's going to work is, the finalists will just come down, we'll have you just sit in the front row, and we have a set of questions. You're going to at least get six questions that we've already formulated. And each person will take turns, you guys can come on down, that's fine. We have a set schedule of who's going to go first on question 1, who goes first on question 2, who goes first on question 3, etc. And it'll be a rotation, so the same person won't go first every single time. Counsel will take the, each council member will ask a question, and then the question will also be posted up top, where you'll be able to read it as well. With that being said, do you ladies have any questions before we begin? So on question 1, the order will be Brenda Dickinson will go first, Lori Hunt second, Mary Williams third. And then, we'll adjust it for the second question. Alright, and Councilman Grossman, the only change I want to have on this, I want question 4 to be asked last. So, if we can just make that note. And Councilman Grossman, if you would like to start whenever you're ready. Ms. Dickinson, if you'd like to just come on up? And we're going to dive right into it.
Okay, question 1. The town of Prescott Valley is governed through a mayor and council town manager form of government. This means that council's role is to establish broad policy with implementation accomplished through the town manager. A, what do you see as your role when it comes to interactions with town staff? B, how would you forward concerns from citizens or special interest groups to address their issue?
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Under the council manager form of government, an elected governing body is responsible for legislative functions such as establishing policy, passing local ordinances, voting appropriations, setting the budget, and developing an overall vision similar to a corporate board of directors. The town manager oversees the administrative and government operations, implements the policies adopted by the council, and advises it. The town manager is similar to that of a corporate chief executive officer, CEO, providing professional management to the board of directors, and maximizing efficiency within the town. The town manager is the person in charge. He is the one to get things done. The citizens of Prescott Valley make their requests made known to the town councilmen, and we relay those requests to the town manager. The town council members cannot directly contact anyone on town staff to do anything. It would be a violation of state law if they did. My position is that I would be a sounding board, an overseer, trustee, and visionary for the town of Prescott Valley, and I would be respectful, encouraging, optimistic, positive, kind, and friendly toward all the staff. How would I forward my concerns, or concerns from citizens or special interest groups to address their issue? I am a member of the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce, and attend the quarterly breakfast. In addition, I would attend and join local clubs and organizational monthly meetings to learn about their concerns. I would attend functions, dinners, and monthly luncheons, and join coffee groups. Also, I would become more informed by self-study and research of their concerns. I would be a presence in the community and attend as many town-sponsored events as possible. In addition to helping make policies and setting a budget, I would attend two open retreats and eight community district board meetings, which are public forums in our master-planned communities. The concerns and requests of the citizens are presented at these meetings and forums. There it is decided if the requests follow the master plan of the town, and if our budget can pay for them. The rest of the time, my job is to get feedback from the citizens of Prescott Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Hunt?
So my husband works at the school districts, and he brought crud home. So if I hack, I apologize in advance, but I feel really good, so, anyway. Good evening, Mayor and Council, staff, community, my colleagues here, and my family. I'm really happy to be here. So, question number one, council manager form of government. I lived the council manager form of government for over 30 years. It's one of the best forms of government there is. And in the United States, the majority of towns and cities and counties practice the council manager form of government. And in answer to the first question, what do you see as your role when it comes to interaction? And in answer to the first question, what do you see as your role when it comes to interaction with town staff? The staff is Larry's staff. The staff is the town manager's staff. It's not the council's staff, with the exception of four people. So, interaction with town staff would be through the town manager, unless we're told otherwise. So, the awesome thing about the council-manager form of government is that the council sets policy and approves a budget, and then delegates to the town manager and his staff. And I emphasize "his" staff. And then the town manager implements the policy within the realms of the approved budget. And that's the best way to make things happen. So, I think one of the best ways to describe the council-manager form of government is similar to a private board of directors and a CEO. So, you all are the board of directors, and Larry is the CEO. And Prescott Valley does that so well, better than any other organization I've ever seen or been a part of. And a really good example of it is the amount of contracting that's done by the city. So it keeps staff low, it reduces liability, it reduces retirement, it reduces the benefits for staff, and we get the job done. So that's what reminds me of the private sector. The mayor-council form of government is very efficient, and it also is financially accountable. But I think one of the most important things that it does is that it allows the council time to go out and spend more time with the constituents, because they don't need to be in the town manager's business. So I think that part is really good about the council-manager form of government. And then finally, I'd like to say that council has very little authority on their own anyway. Everything's done as a group. So, I don't know if I answered B, but I would forward any concerns that I get through the town manager until I was told otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Williams? Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. Addressing A and B, as regards town staff, I would hope I would always be polite and respectful, just as I have been with each one of you. Staff are our resident experts. They keep our town running smoothly, and they're here to help and guide us, but they do not work for me. There are clear-cut policies and procedures as to the chain of command, which for non-exempt employees is through our town manager, Mr. Tarkowski. I think you don't need the rest of the history of the structure. And as far as concerns from citizens or special interest groups, first, it's important to listen to their concerns. If someone comes to me, we need to listen. It's important to let them know that I personally cannot commit in any manner other than to assure them they may expect fair, impartial, and professional treatment of their issue, and that I will try to connect them with the appropriate resource. At that point, I would communicate it all, including names and contact information, to the town manager. Perhaps there's even a form already for this type of internal information transmittal, but as town manager, it needs to go to him. And last, if appropriate, I'd respond back to the citizen, letting them know where and to whom they had been referred. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So next up, Ms. Hunt will go first, then Ms. Williams, then Ms. Dickinson.
Question number two. Are there any programs or services that you feel the town should offer? How would you suggest funding this service or program? Or which other program or service would you eliminate in order to fund it?
Okay, so, a week or two ago, I met with the mayor, and he asked me the same question. And I thought for a little while, and I couldn't think of anything. Prescott Valley doesn't need to be fixed. I thought about, hmm, what about workforce housing? But then, through my research, I realized that there is several hundred apartments approved, waiting to be built. And when those get built, I believe that market rate for apartments will come down because the supply will go up. So I think that that's taken care of. I love the idea of a YMCA. I really like that, I appreciated the Facebook survey that you put on, Mayor, and I replied to it. But I think the YMCA is a great idea. The partnership would be fabulous. Our recreation staff could program it, and it would save the town building a community center, or having to staff a community center, or pay for staff, or assume the liability or the retirement costs. So I think the YMCA is a great idea. And then I met with Norm, the Public Works Director, the other day. Because a lot of people get up before you and say, "We need a stop sign, we need the side of the roads mode, we need a pothole filled," you know? And I talked to Norm, and I was pleasantly surprised that there's a program in place. When somebody calls into his department and asks for a stop sign or a pothole, many times, it's done within the same day. So they get a phone call, it goes out to the field, the field person looks at it, and if it's justified, sometimes it's done the same exact day. So that doesn't need fixing either. So, my number one thing, again, I don't think anything needs fixing, but my number one thing, if anything, any program should occur here, it's the construction of the Big Chino. That's what I think the number one thing is. And in 2008, there were over eight people interested in partnering with the city, financial partners, to come in and help build the Big Chino. So, I think that that's my number one thing, and I think that there's a way to fund it through private investment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Services, programs I feel the town should offer, how would you suggest funding? A citizen friend already approached me with a suggestion. She feels the town needs a cemetery. And I agree. Conceptually, it's a basic service that the entire area needs, and the town might consider. I would meet with Mr. Tarkowski to seek his guidance and input, but I envision the problem, the project could potentially involve community development for site identification, as well as permitting and licensing. Possible IGAs, if, for example, we were to partner with Yavapai County or one of the other towns. Timing and source of funding would need to be evaluated and determined, as well as seeking input from Parks and Rec. I think a special cemetery, 501(c)(3) for beautification memorials such as trees, benches, maybe memorial brick pathways, would also be an asset to help with some of the expenses. Again, you know, there is a community-wide need. I am not Catholic, but I know of many Catholic friends who have buried loved ones in cottonwood because there is no Catholic service. And I know that the county's starting to run short of space, so there is a need. And the town of Gilbert just created a cemetery, so other communities are doing this also. As far as where to cut to fund a new project, I think honestly it would be presumptuous of me to make any suggestions without a full council briefing on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have three suggestions. In my Prescott Valley Citizens Academy class a few years ago, we had a discussion about how to improve the entrance to Prescott Valley on Highway 69 from Dewey to make it look more inviting. Beautification is a key aspect of community development, and it can be an easy way to bring people together. I have had a few discussions with various people since the class, and a few ideas were brought forth. We could possibly form a committee for the preservation of Prescott Valley to research what the cost would be and how to fund it, and then present it at a work-study meeting for the town council. The committee would formulate ideas possibly implementing the following. Have a community-wide contest, getting input from the citizens. Have a five-to-six-foot-tall brick wall of some nature on either side of Highway 69 with a decoration built into it depicting an antelope or something emblematic of the area with "Welcome to Prescott Valley." Landscape with trees and bushes on either side of Highway 69 surrounding the walls, or have two-foot decorative fences surrounding an arid garden with a walking path and a few benches. Another suggestion was to have a wrought-iron figure of an antelope or some sculpture on either side done by an artist in town, which, again, might be a contest voted upon by the town council. The project could be funded possibly by a beautification grant from the state. Research would need to be done, but there are various grants that help small municipalities, nonprofits, and local governments for beautification of public spaces. A successful project would involve many partners, the town, businesses, residents, community groups, and organizations in planning, fundraising, site preparation, planting, and maintenance. The results would be a community beautification project, an entrance to Prescott Valley that would improve economic vitality, boosts civic pride, encourages active enjoyment of the landscape, and improves quality of life. The second program would be to possibly revitalize older neighborhoods by using the same committee, Citizens for the Preservation of Prescott Valley. Volunteers would have fixer-up days for seniors, the disabled, and veterans, utilizing the Adopt a Street program, the roving area neighborhood dumpster provided by Patriot Disposal, and the Prescott Valley Neighborhood Toolbox, and possibly the Take Pride Townwide Campaign already adopted by the town of Prescott Valley. Possibly a poster contest could be had involving the community. We could have general beautification days, encouraging people to clean up after their dogs, and encourage drivers who smoke not to toss cigarette butts out their car windows. The last program we might have, because water is so precious and without stepping on toes, would be to get involved with the University of Arizona's Arizona Project Wet and Arizona Water Festivals. APW promotes responsible water stewardship through education involving teachers, students, and community engagement. One of their statewide programs is Arizona Water Festivals. There are 26 towns and cities in Arizona participating in having water festivals, including the Verde Valley Water Festival in Yavapai County and Flagstaff. Both are having their 12th annual water festival this fall. In 2018, the Verde had 439 students, 17 teachers, 40 parents, and 95 community volunteers participate. The water festivals instill a deeper understanding of water in Arizona's water resources through a water festival community education event, teacher workshops, and extensive volunteer and community involvement. They are a one-day event, and volunteers are encouraged from the community where the festival is held, ensuring that the festival program is community-driven. The event is generally located outside of school. Trained volunteers engage children in an interactive and fun exploration of the groundwater system, watersheds, water conservation, and the water cycle. They prepare lesson materials, help set up, facilitate a lesson plan, and/or greet students. The U of A College of Agriculture and Life Sciences participates. The curriculum appeals to all students as it is about real, tangible, relevant topics happening around them. After participation in this program, all participants better understand Arizona's interconnected water resources and are more aware of how water use affects our water supply. Project Wet is funded by government agencies, private companies, corporations, foundations, and nongovernmental organizations. Some of these are the Nature Conservancy, Nissan, Abbott Fund, Epcor Water, Global Water, Tucson Water, and numerous cities and towns. Participating in an Arizona Water Festival would have only a positive impact on the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Question three. Town of Prescott Valley has used a three-pronged approach to economic development utilizing the Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation for the recruitment of commercial and industrial businesses, the Town of Prescott Valley for retail business development, and the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce for business expansion and retention. One, in your opinion, how successful has this been? And two, what would you recommend to improve our ability to enhance our economic development success?
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I should have clarified that.
It's solved, it's solved. We'll be polite, it doesn't matter. Okay. How successful has this been? Clearly, it's been successful. If you look at the differences between our modern Town of Prescott Valley and the City of Prescott, at some point, most of Prescott comes to our retail areas to shop. It must also be said that our town is friendlier to businesses with no commercial rental tax, which is a huge benefit to businesses. As the mayor discussed on Talk of the Town Tuesday, Prescott Valley is exploding with new home construction and an influx of new citizens, and the coming census will simply validate what we already know. Historically in Arizona, it's land, rooftops, and commercial, in that order. At one point, at this point, we have the rooftops with more residents moving in daily. Our grocery stores are all overcrowded, and throughout the Quad Cities area, there are limited choices for restaurants or shopping. Part of that is charming and small-town, but our resident demographics are changing. Just look at the excitement in the lines at the opening of Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin Robbins, and even Gem's Cafe a few months ago. Our residents are excited about new things coming to our town. In my opinion, and especially as the largest municipality in Yavapai County, we want to be the town where Quad Cities residents and more come to shop and play as their one-stop destination. Pivi's Economic Development needs to continue to seek out new anchors, new restaurants, retailers, and other service providers. We're definitely at rooftops now, it's time for commercial. Continuing with that, the question was about the town's ability to enhance economic development success. I have several thoughts. There is an older document referenced in the General Plan 2025 on page 202 entitled Focus on Business, wherein five key focus areas are defined as being very relevant to Prescott Valley. One of them is workforce development. This was also reiterated at a July Quad Cities Business News article discussing the Economic Development Foundation. One such workforce development plan is the CDL Truckers Training Program based here in Prescott Valley. Almost every delivery truck you see driving around anywhere has a "Drivers Wanted" sign on the back of their truck, and virtually all contractors are desperately in need of help. As a nation, we've lost our vocational workforce. How could we, as a town, think outside of the box to recruit more training programs and hopefully retain those trainees in our community? Incubation sites is one idea that has been done successfully in other towns in Arizona. Basically, it's a quasi-public-private joint venture utilizing existing vacant spaces as launchpads for home-based business entrepreneurs. Could we incorporate some educational purposes into that equation? Medical-related fields are excellent career paths, and just across the street here, I see an abundance of senior living communities that will all need quality caregivers and techs. Yavapai College and NAU both have excellent nursing programs. How can we help them or other training resources to improve and build our workforce? The possible wing space office-sharing concept is another example of thinking outside the box to meet the needs of a changing society. Seeing this need almost a decade ago, we suggested and created a dozen small-office professional spaces in the National Bank Building in downtown Prescott. We need to think outside the box a little bit for what might work and what is already working in other communities across the country. I've heard it said that I may be an underdog because I did not volunteer for town commissions or the Citizens Academy last year. Well, I can say that probably would have been more fun than we had in all of 2018. But I can also tell you all about YRMC's hybrid cardiac operating room and outstanding cardiac team. My husband of 48 years was in both YRMC West and East, and was the fortunate recipient of fabulous medical care as he went through not one but two cardiac procedures. We're blessed he's doing well, he's here with me tonight, but top-notch medical care is another reason and another benefit of this community, and should continue. benefit of this community and should continue to be actively promoted as a marketing tool because honestly, that was not always the case. For those of you who have been here a long time, things have changed. Marketing 101. And guys, sorry, this is an oops, but update the old aerial photos on the PVAZ website. Just this week, I found an aerial that was pretty old, and it should be updated showing the Homestead Apartments, the entire YRMC Hospital East Campus, and the new medical buildings running on Florentine. The award-winning video that Prescott Valley did, the Economic Development Foundation did is awesome. I think it's really great. And last but not least, and I mentioned this a few minutes ago, it's really important to recognize the importance and retain the no commercial rental tax policy. The city of Prescott and other business communities in our vicinity here all have business rental taxes that range from two to 2.75% for office or retail leased space. That tax for a larger commercial tenant can literally amount to hundreds of dollars per month, which makes our town far more desirable in the eyes of potential businesses preparing sites for relocation. Thank you.
Prescott Valley was founded fifty-three years ago, and we are well on our way into prosperity for our town and its residents. During that time, we have seen two major structures be built in Prescott Valley, which are a $61 million regional medical center and a $15 million regional rehabilitation hospital that is rated number five in the nation. Are we successful? Yes. Thanks to the foresight of our town planners, we have a strategically-planned downtown and entertainment district, a regional shopping center, and a crosstown highway that offers new development opportunities and unlimited business potential. The goal of the PVEDF, a nonprofit organization, is to enhance the town's revenues by increasing the business base and sales tax revenues generated by commercial and retail businesses. More than one million square feet of commercial space has been built in Prescott Valley since 2013. The Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation takes a regional approach and helps all towns and cities within the Quad Cities area. They promote quality of life and affordable housing, a more cost-effective and business-friendly region, lower regulations, and a different pace of life. In manufacturing last year, PVEDF brought Barney's Precision from Southern California to Prescott Valley, which contracts with the aerospace industry. Also, they brought Lucy's Machine Shop with the added bonus of family members who bought three homes. In 2018, PVEDF's outreach efforts included hosting a networking event in Anaheim, California at a brewery by the Angels Stadium. The Town of Prescott Valley Economic Development Coordinator, Ben Hooper, explained to me that there are two primary reasons for his job, ensuring there is enough high-level sales tax and ensuring that Prescott Valley has enough commercial business to meet the needs of the community and to support its residents. Fifty-five percent of Prescott Valley's general fund is sales tax capture as we don't assess property tax. The Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce has an A-plus rating by the Better Business Bureau. Their website is full of opportunities to network with other businesses, attend ribbon cuttings, and participate in a variety of mixers. They host a number of events for businesses, including Quarterly Breakfast, the Prescott Valley Jobs Fair coordinated with PVEDF and a host of several others, and Prescott Valley Days. These three organizations have worked together as an effective and powerful team to enhance the business and retail in our community. As a result, smart growth has allowed Prescott Valley to attract and retain large numbers of light manufacturing and high-tech industries, plus a wide variety of other businesses to support our expanding industrial base. We have a business that builds a part for military helicopters and another that makes night vision goggles. There is a lot of cooperative effort and networking that goes from the town to the college to the businesses. The community works together. PVEDF works with Yavapai College to design certificates that makes an available workforce for these manufacturers. In retail, human resource professionals are out there competing for workforce using benefits. The challenge is what can we do to help companies as far as staying here and keeping their employees? The Town of Prescott Valley helps find financial options, permits, and qualified applicants. Our primary focus right now is getting new full-service restaurants versus limited-service restaurants. They are not moving into small towns, the same with grocery stores. The problem is being the digital markets like Amazon, who bought out Whole Foods. The best that can be done is to point out to the private sector all the opportunities here in Prescott Valley and inform and steer them toward Prescott Valley. What makes them to decide is the population of the town and the income level or purchasing power. The good thing is the town is repurposing big-box stores like Kmart and Albertson's, then Hagans, that were left empty with Pruitt's Furniture Store and the 500-seat Heights Church opening soon. We still have Sam's Club to repurpose. Accompanying the town's population growth, commercial expansion will need to continue as Prescott Valley strives to become a major economic force in the region. Other areas that have development opportunities are hospitality with only one hotel located in the central business district. Entertainment options are needed that appeal to a wide range of generations, and more nursing and assisted care facilities, as well as additional primary care physicians and specialty doctors are needed. Ending on a positive note, Prescott Valley's Central Business District has been designated as a Quality Opportunity Zone by the U.S. Department of Treasury. The town requested this designation with the goal of accelerating new ground-up development in sectors where a demonstrated market demand already exists. Good and amazing things are yet to come. To quote PVEDF's Leslie Contreras, "Nothing amazing can be done alone."
I guess I was overeager. Sorry about that. Okay, so economic development is what I do and what I did and what I still do, and so I loved having this question being one of our questions we were asked. So, in my opinion, how successful has the Three-Legged Stool been? It's been very successful. I'm impressed with a town of this size and their ability to do economic development in the way they've decided to do it. So the three-team approach allows each of the individual teams to focus at the task at hand. So that is probably contributed to some of the success. And then the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce, they're in the trenches every day with businesses, so they know what's going on. They have ambassadors that visit businesses. They have events where businesses come to, and I will bet you that if they hear about a business that is having an issue, they'll organize around a table what we used to call a red team to bring everybody in to help answer what the issue is for that business until it's taken care of. The other good thing about Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce is a shop-local program. That is something that's very important. When I started the Citizens Academy this time, and Larry was our first speaker, and everybody was asking questions because Ryan couldn't get the technology going. Sorry about that, Ryan. But it actually turned out really good because I raised my hand, there was a bunch of questions, and then I raised my hand and I said, "Larry, is it true that we don't pay property tax?" So that's the economic development I had on, so that he could get that information out to residents, and residents couldn't believe that we didn't pay the Town of Prescott Valley property tax. And then I raised my hand and I said, "Is it true? If it's true that you don't have property tax, then you get at least just over 25% of your budget from sales tax. Doesn't that mean that we should all shop local?" And he's like, "Yes." He said, "In fact, if the Sam's Club was still open, I'd be telling you to cut up your Costco card right now." So that was pretty cool. So I think a shop-local program is very important. And then with regard to the foundation, I'm really proud that the foundation is here. It's a great idea because it's nonprofit. It doesn't have to do any reporting. It doesn't have to let anybody know who they're working on. Businesses can remain confidential. They can sign non-disclosures and not let the information out, the competitors out. When I was in Sacramento, one of the last projects we did was with an Amazon fulfillment center, and the very first thing they asked when they walked in was, "We need confidentiality, and we need a non-disclosure." So Michael at the foundation is able to do that because he's a nonprofit, so that's a great way to do it. I was talking to somebody, and they said our biggest exporter in Prescott Valley is smart kids getting out of high school. The foundation's number-one goal is to promote job growth. That's how we keep the kids here. So that's great that the foundation does that. And then I had the opportunity to meet with Ben Hooper, and I say, "He's your man. He does a great job." When I walked in, he had a list of all of the International Conference Shopping Centers that was going to be at the LA show coming up, and he was planning on going. So he was highlighting who he needed to talk to so that he could have a face-to-face with them and tell them about Prescott Valley. That's what those businesses do. I did recon in International Conference Shopping Center for years and years and years and did booths, and sometimes it takes years of getting in front of their face before they make a decision. So he's doing a great job with that, and he should also be commended for getting the opportunity zone because what that does is it brings capital funds to the area, it brings investors to the area, and they get incentives for it, and that's what we need. The other kudos for the local or for the town's retail commercial process is Leonard up in the City Manager's Office. He's the one that sits up there and crunches numbers and prepares them so that Ben can use them to reply to leads that he gets from retail and commercial businesses. So that's a great incentive. And then I want, as a resident of Prescott Valley, I want to thank the council for taking the convention center out of bankruptcy. That was so important. If that building had gone dark, it would just be so sad. And so as a resident, I want to thank you for doing that, and thank you for the agreement that you have with Spectra. They're doing things that the town can't afford to do. When I met with Larry the other day, he said he was watching a sports channel of some sort on national TV, and up comes an advertisement for the Harlem Globe Trotters. And one of the three locations they were going to be was in Prescott Valley, Arizona. Do you know how much that would have cost? This town can't afford that kind of marketing. I've priced it before. So that's awesome. It's awesome to have that convention center here and Spectra as a partner because they're huge, and they can bring in all kinds of marketing for us. I talked to Ben a little bit, so this is number, or this is B. What would I recommend? I talked to Ben a little bit about his relationship with the commercial brokers. He said, "Most of them are all in the valley. There's a big one up here." I asked him, "How do you done a familiarization tour?" He goes, "Well, they're really not interested in familiarization tours." But I still think that it's important. I've done several of them. They usually love when they can come up. Maybe they can see a Northern Suns game. They can meet with the council, shake the mayor's hand, and then find out what news going on in Prescott Valley. And there's been enough new stuff lately. Those guys are so busy sometimes that they can't keep up with what's going on in towns around them, but it may be a good thing to do. And then finally, what would I recommend to improve our ability to enhance economic development? I don't want to be a broken record, but I recommend the Big Chino because if we don't have water, people aren't going to come. Businesses aren't going to be able to come. So that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman?
Yeah, we'll just do whoever five is. Okay. All right. Okay, I'll be going to question number five, and we'll be using the sequence for question number five, which will be Mary Williams, Lori Hunt, and Brenda Dickerson. Dickerson. Okay, the question for number five is, "Is there anything council needs to know that may compromise or disqualify you as a candidate? Do you foresee any potential conflict of interest between your personal activities and those duties as a council member?"
We probably should have started with this question, huh?
No, none at all. As I said, I've lived and been involved in this area for over fifteen years. I'm acquainted with several members of the Prescott Council, several members of the county board of supervisors, as well as state and federal elected members. Get along with all of them. In the interest of full disclosure, my son is the Director of Development Services for Yavapai County, and I get along with him, too. I'm self-employed. We are small business owners with both a real estate company and an accounting firm. Short question.
Thank you.
My answer to this question is no, no conflict. I said before, I'm totally transparent. I had to practice it in my career. I live in Quailwood. Quailwood's near Biltout. We have Quailwood Greens behind us. In the area where we live off the Seventeenth Hole, it doesn't look like that would ever be developed because it's pretty low and pretty deep and zoned open space. My husband works for Humboldt Unified School District. My interests are the Chamber, Heights Church, and the Humboldt Education Foundation. My brother and sister-in-law do live here in Yavapai Hills. He's retired law enforcement. Their son, my nephew, lives here in Stone Ridge, and he works for Yavapai County, and his wife is a stay-at-home mommy, so no conflicts.
No, there would be no conflict. I understand the position as Prescott Valley Town Councilwoman is a nonpartisan position. I will honor that. I will make any and all decisions based on my personal principles and values and what is best for the town of Prescott Valley. I have a mother who lives here in Prescott, in Pinion Oaks area, and she's eighty-nine. However, she's still driving. She is in excellent health and goes grocery shopping and takes herself to the hairdresser, and I only ask her to call me before she leaves and call me when she gets home. Otherwise, we see each other generally once a week when we go to church and go out to lunch together. I believe in Prescott Valley. I believe in the vision that we continue to grow and prepare for the future, and most of all, I believe in leaving Prescott Valley better than it was. Let's see, I think, do I foresee any potential conflict between my personal activities and those duties as a council member? No. I understand if appointed that as a Prescott Valley Town Councilman, I will have other and assorted duties, meetings, and events that I will have to attend. I would make them my priority. I did not venture into this lightly. I do have a life and other responsibilities, but just as our forefathers did when they had farms, wives, and families to raise, I will give my all to performing my duties well and responsibly. I will support the town council decisions and will be the best representative that I know how.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman?
Moving on to question six, we'll have the order of being Lori Hunt, Brenda Dickinson, and then Mary Williams. Question number six is, "Council members periodically travel to attend obligatory meetings and/or conferences that range from one to four days in length, some that start early morning..." early morning, both locally and out of town. As a council member, would you be able to routinely represent the town by attending these functions?"
Yes, I would with great pride. I mentioned before, I care-take for my dad. He actually likes it when I leave because it's quieter, I think. And we have great neighbors that help out. And today, I took him to my brother's house and he'll be there for four days. So, yes, I have coverage and I would do it with great pride. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let's see. Would you be able to routinely represent the town by attending these and other functions? Yes. I would have no problems leaving town. I am retired and have no obligations that would prevent me from attending any functions at this time other than two cats. One is 18 and a half, and he's still healthy and, and getting along with his eight-year-old brother. I have a fairly new car and can drive myself to the meetings. I am in good health, passed my annual physical with flying colors.
Thank you.
Travel? Yes, I could. I set my own schedule and have traveled throughout Arizona as well as nationally fulfilling duties for a previous organization for the last several years. As this is my, would have been our last question, I'd like to kind of make some concluding remarks here. I know that each of us here tonight is honored to be here and that you have a difficult decision. I've lived in Arizona for over 50 years and been in the Quad Cities for 15. My Arizona roots run deep. At a time when the decade, my decade of service to another organization is finally done, and my husband as well again, my town unexpectedly had an opening where I truly believe I could help and serve. I'm on the list for the next Citizen Academy, and I've already reserved my domain name, votemarywilliams.com, to rerun for this seat in 2020. So, in closing for question six, I ask each of you for your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Packard, wrap us up.
We're going to do, or, question four. Okay, ladies. Question four is, "The town's overall water resource plan includes the importation of water from the Big Chino Ranch. Please share with us your thoughts on this plan."
Water is finite and is a shared resource. Consequently, it needs to be managed. And as planners, we should do everything we can for now and for the future. We are either proactive or reactive. Right now, we are in a condition called groundwater mining, and we are overusing our aquifer by about one foot per year. Groundwater pumping or mining over the decades has removed more water than has been replaced or recharged. In 1980, the Groundwater Management Act was passed. State legislature said to stop groundwater mining by 2025. The Arizona Revised Statute, Section 45, 462, states, "The management goal of the Prescott Active Management Area is safe yield by January 1st, 2025. That is, they must diminish reliance on groundwater to the point that recharge and extraction are in rough balance. The safe yield goal is a basin-wide balance between the amount of groundwater withdrawn and the annual amount of natural and artificial recharge in the AMA. The goal, once achieved, will ensure, will ensure that Prescott Valley residents will have a supply of water that will last indefinitely. This also increases the importance of artificial recharge facilities, the need to conserve water, and explore ways to optimize natural recharge. In 1980, we had 45 years to meet the soft landing. We now have five. Rules and restrictions have been instilled to reach that goal. It is critical to economic security that we do. In 1999, due to stipulations in the Groundwater Management Code, the Assured Water Supply rules were invoked in the Prescott AMA, which restricts the use of groundwater supplies for new subdivision development. With the passage of the GMA, residential developers had to prove to the Arizona Department of Water Resources that they had a 100-year assured water supply. New subdivision plats within the AMA cannot be approved without demonstrating this is possible. Prior to the declaration of groundwater mining in the Prescott AMA, that supply typically was groundwater. Since the declaration, developers can no longer use groundwater supplies to prove a 100-year water supply. They must show another source. Assured and adequate water supply programs were created by the ADWR to address the problem of limited groundwater supplied in Arizona. Both programs evaluate the availability of a 100-year water supply considering current and committed demands as well as growth projections. It is projected that by 2030, the population in the Prescott AMA could exceed 200,000. Senate Bill 1575 Title 45 defines adequate water supply as groundwater, surface water, or effluent that is continuously legally and physically available, and that the applicant has the financial capability to make the supply of water available for the proposed use. The idea of importing additional water goes back to the 1920s as a way to increase population growth in Arizona. Under current groundwater rules, pumping from one location in the AMA can be offset by recharging a volume of water at another location. In 2004, Prescott and Prescott Valley teamed up to purchase the Big Chino Water Ranch. Together with the Salt River Project, they are working to develop a water transmission project known as the Big Chino Water Ranch Project to transport the water from the ranch to Prescott's storage facilities in Chino Valley. From there, each community would arrange to bring the water further into its separate water system. The Prescott AMA covers 485 square miles in central Yavapai County and includes Prescott Valley. The two most important issues facing the Prescott AMA are limitations on renewable water supplies and continued growth, and the statutory responsibility to reach safe yield by 2025. The Big Chino Pipeline is Prescott Valley's assured water supply to reach safe yield. Consequently, a Prescott Valley needs to get the pipeline done by 2025. Prescott Valley residents have done a good job of conserving water. Right now, we are directed by the Arizona Department of Water Resources, and we adhere to state law on conservation. The town's overall per capita, per capita use rate is approximately 100 gallons per day. A downward trend in daily water usage began with the implementation of tiered water rates in 2004. The more you use, the more you are charged. However, conservation alone will not result in the achievement of safe yield in the Prescott AMA. According to the AWR, in order to achieve and maintain safe yield by 2025 and beyond, conservation and multiple other water management strategies are needed. Big Chino water supplied to new growth produces effluent from the wastewater treatment process. Over half of the wastewater treated at wastewater, at a wastewater plant is treated to meet a reuse standard to market as effluent. Non-potable water are recharged at an approved pond to cycle back to the aquifer. Recharge supports the long-term goal to balance the region's water withdrawals while working to reach the Prescott AMA's safe yield requirements. Prescott Valley homes and businesses currently return about 65% of the water delivered to them to the wastewater treatment plant. Recharge and final cleansing comes out clean, but it is not drinkable. It is stored below the surface. The Prescott Valley wastewater treatment plant capacity is 3.5 million gallons. We adhere to permits from the ADWR and Department of Environmental Quality to pipe effluent into the ground for which we get water credits. Due to the fact that about 80% of the outflow from the Upper Verde River Springs is supplied by groundwater from the Big Chino sub-basin, there are many concerns about pumping any amount of groundwater would harm the UVS. Consequently, Prescott and Prescott Valley purchased the Big Chino Water Ranch about 20 miles away from the UVS and 18 miles northwest of Paulden. A lawsuit settled in 2010 about the impact of drawing water from the Big Chino sub-basin resulted in a hydrologic monitoring network to determine how to best manage groundwater withdrawals so that no harm is done to the UVS. Since 2013, Prescott and Prescott Valley entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the Salt River Project to contract a groundwater model of the Big Chino along with continuous monitoring of hydrologic conditions. The ultimate purpose of the monitoring and groundwater modeling project is to better define long-term impacts from this increase in pumping and to develop a mitigation plan to prevent impact to the Upper Verde River Springs. This will also form the basis of a feasible plan to import water from the Big Chino Water Ranch property while avoiding impacts to the Upper Verde River. Historic evidence indicates that pumping groundwater from the Big Chino Water Ranch won't impact the Upper Verde River Springs due to the simple fact that groundwater has been pumped and consumed by agriculture at this location for 80 years without impacting the UVS or lowering the water table at the ranch property. The water table at the ranch is within about 20 to 50 feet of the surface and extends to a depth of about 2,500 feet. The Big Chino sub-basin is estimated to contain 15 million acre-feet of water and is larger than Rhode Island. Aquifers and groundwater can be naturally or artificially recharged. Natural recharge occurs when precipitation falls to the surface and percolates through the ground into an aquifer. The rate of recharge depends on several factors, including the amount of precipitation there is. Natural recharge can take days or possibly centuries. Artificial recharge is when water is pumped to the aquifer through wells. Springs occur where groundwater meets the land surface. Water that recharges groundwater will fill an aquifer and naturally needs a place to exit. Groundwater discharged in springs is largely recycled water, a part of the hydrologic cycle in which rain falls on land. It is stored underground, released to the surface, and returns to the atmosphere by a variety of means to fall as rain again. Just like hurricanes, there is a cone of uncertainty as to what the future holds for this area and our water. Arizona currently is experiencing a significant and ongoing drought. Precipitation has been below average for 15 years. According to the Prescott Active Management Area Fourth Management Plan, it is possible to achieve safe yield by 2025, and safe yield can be maintained as far into the future as about 2070 at projected growth rates. But it will require importation and use of Big Chino groundwater or some other supply. My thoughts are, the best scenario would be to be proactive and build the Big Chino Water Ranch Pipeline. When this is done, the town of Prescott Valley will provide an alternate source for droughts, meet the safe yield requirement, and provide water for economic development well into the future. The introduction of additional water supplies from the Water Ranch outside of the Water Management Area will reduce the overdraft and subsequent stress on the existing groundwater resource. Thank you.
Thank you. As everyone knows, our Prescott Active Management Area is currently in overdraft. As of the AMA Fourth Management Plan effective date January 2017, and due to be replaced very soon by Plan 5, it states in Section 1.5, and I quote, "Currently, there is insufficient management plan authority, infrastructure, and financing in place to ensure that safe yield will be achieved by year 2025." Remember, this was two years ago. Perhaps for us, the silver lining about the last economic recession is that it slowed down growth, combined with other factors that meant our water consumption was also fairly stable. Well, the winds have changed and we're now in a boom cycle, and there's increased demand for everything. In the Fourth Management Plan, again dating back to 2017, it says, "Importation of water supplies from outside the Prama or other water management techniques to augment the AMA water supply are critical to the Prama attaining its safe yield." And according to our own town website, "At this time, the only legally sort, available source of water for the Prescott AMA is the Big Chino as defined in the statutes." Our town is doing a great job with conservation and recharge and even working on additional injection pumps to increase our allowable recharge, but it's not enough to get us where we need to go. Water Resource Manager John Munderlow advises the pipeline construction estimate is in the realm of three or more years to build. Yes, it's a huge problem, but, project, but here's the problem. No one is driving the car. Majority stakeholder Prescott has just pushed back any decisions for another month or so while they hold a series of four open meetings to educate the public about water. I attended their first meeting on water yesterday to see what they were saying. The viewpoint expressed was that Big Chino is a great asset for the future, but Prescott is basically doing pretty well at the present time. Remember, Prescott, even though they have contaminant issues in them, has some lakes that we don't have. When facing challenges, I like to have a Plan A, Plan B, and so forth, and hope I end up going with Plan A in a perfect world. As I said a moment ago, we're not driving the car. If it were a perfect world, Mary's Plan A would be to open a dialogue with Prescott and see if we might work together to allow us to become a bigger stakeholder. This Big Chino water is the only legal source for all of us, and it's vital to our communities. Before the recession hit, it was originally believed the pipeline would be done by around 2007. Well, it's now half past 2019 and we're still in the parking lot. We need to move forward in the best possible manner for all parties. It won't get cheaper or easier by waiting. All the exploding growth in both of our communities won't stop if we wait. We may not be the oldest community in Yavapai County, but at this point, we are the largest. My husband met with a significant landowner in Paulden for breakfast this morning. His wells are in the Big Chino, and they're doing great. I understand, just this week, someone that everyone in this room knows had his well in Coyote Springs go dry. I'm not saying it's due to anything. What I am saying is our groundwater has limits, and we need this pipeline to move forward. This person, speaking purely for herself, thinks we need to step up to our leadership position as the largest municipality for the greater benefit of all. Plus, there's the unknown and undetermined possibility of a proposed pumped, storage-hydro-generating lake project in the vicinity of Seligman. At the rate we're going, a potential multimillion-dollar federal project that has not even had its NEPA study done yet could be up and running before we ever see a drop of our water. At this point, that project is an unknown. But my Plan A would be that our pipeline was in and flowing before they start on their lakes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, you recommended saving the best for last, huh? The Big Chino Water Importation Project is a brilliant idea. It's a long-term insurance policy for our area. Why? The aquifer is declining one foot depth per year. And we have a goal of reaching safe yield by 2025. It's a goal. It's highly encouraged. What happens if we don't? Well, I've known if states threaten to keep your sales tax if you don't do what the law tells you to do. I'm not saying that's going to happen here, but you don't know what's going to happen if we don't meet our safe yield in 2025. I don't really want to take that gamble. It provides another why. It provides for managed growth. It's a goal. It's highly encouraged. What happens if we don't? Well, I've known if states threaten to keep your sales tax if you don't do what the law tells you to do. I'm not saying that's going to happen here, but you don't know what's going to happen if we don't meet our safe yield in 2025. I don't really want to take that gamble. It provides another why. It provides for managed growth. Growth pays for the development of the Big Chino. Those of us that are existing, we don't pay. So there's a sustainable aquifer that exists, or the Big Chino also allows for a sustainable So those of us that are existing here, and we get to pull groundwater up for our use, we're mining the groundwater, but we don't have to pay for the Big Chino. And the Big Chino is going to replenish our aquifer for us at no cost. So I met with John, and he's amazing, by the way. But before I met with any of Larry's staff, I did text him and say, "Hey, Larry, I'm going to meet with so-and-so-and-so-and-so-and-so of your staff. Is that okay?" And he said, "Yeah, sure. No problem." But John was amazing, and I followed up on a phone call with him, too. You guys are so lucky to have him. And so after I read through all my notes after meeting with him and read through all the materials that he gave me, I called him back, and I said, "So, John, is it safe to say that the Big Chino is an asset to existing safe yield without the expense?" And he said, "Yes." That's a great way to put it. The other reason why we need the Big Chino is because it'll help us generate jobs. As I said before, when the restaurants and the businesses need to come, they need to rely on the water. That's a great big incentive for them to see that big pipeline coming to Prescott So how? How do we do it? I mentioned before that in 2008, there were eight financiers interested in entering the western water market. I bet there's more than that now. Private investment. Okay, so how? How do we make all this happen? The Coalition is an amazing thing, and thank you, Vice Mayor and I, for chairing that for so many years and for providing John as a staff, because I know he does most of the work. So the Coalition is an asset, and their goal is to acquire safe yield by 2025. And they have a slew of best management practice projects that they're implementing to help conserve in the Active Management Area. And then one of their major goals is to protect the Upper Verde River. You all have already jumped a big, huge hurdle in 2010 when you settled the lawsuit with the Salt River Project and all the jurisdictions down south. The requirement was to fix legislation and to make sure there was no impact on the Verde. So it makes sense that that's the Coalition's number-one goal. So then I asked John, I said, "So this is all great. You have a way to pay for it. You've been through the settlement agreement. The cities down south won't worry about it. What about the right-of-way?" And he said, "No problem. We have a bunch of public roads, and that's how we're going to route it down here." So that's another check off there. So why not build the Big Chino, is what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll open it up to council questions. If there's any questions for the candidates? No? And I just want to close before we vote and just thank you, each of you, for stepping up and coming here tonight and being involved in this process. I know it can be stressful and a little nerve-wracking, but you should all be commended for that. And although one person will be picked tonight, each one of you would be an outstanding council person. So with that being said, six will vote tonight, but in 2020, if you want to continue to try to help, let the citizens of Prescott Valley vote. So with that being said, I think we all have our ballots. We'll just take a couple minutes. Bear with us, and then we'll have the clerk tally it up. While she's tallying that up, each of you, whether you're picked or not, I'd love to speak with you on a one-on-one basis sometime in the next few weeks, if your schedules permit that. And please just contact Leah, and we could schedule maybe an hour to talk.
Mayor and Council, I have tallied the straw vote that you just cast. It appears that the majority of the votes are going to Lori Hunt.
All right. With that being said, congratulations, Ms. Hunt. And please see the clerk. Again, ladies, you did all an amazing job. So with that being said, we will be adjourning for the night.